We're visiting tonight to our first Planning Commission meeting of the year. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. May we have a roll call, please? Okay?
Certainly. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Sean Keer.
Here.
Miles Schlesinger.
Here.
And Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
Yes, there is. Item number seven, the appeal on the warming shelter at the request of the appellant, the warming shelter. We are continuing indefinitely that hearing, so it means it will not be held tonight.
There will be no hearing on the warming shelter tonight, is that correct?
That's right. And when it is rescheduled, we will send out a new notice to people in the notice area and also new published notice in the paper.
So there's not action we need to consider regarding the warming shelter tonight, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
No action we need to consider?
That's right.
All right. Thank you. Any other changes to the agenda?
No.
All right. So the next issue on the agenda is the election of officers, and tonight we'll be electing a chair and a vice chair. Do we have any nominations for chair?
Yes. I would like to see you stay in your position another year, so I'm going to nominate Steve Griffiths.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Procedurally, I think we can use closed nominations and then have a vote on the person.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to close the nomination? Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now all take a vote on the chair. All in favor of Griffiths as a chair?
Aye.
All, any opposed? All right. We have a chair. Is there, are there nominations that are now open for vice chair? I'd like to nominate our current vice chair. Patty Crowe.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close the nominations for vice chair?
Motion to close. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor of Patty Crowe serving as a vice chair? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Patty. And thank you to the commission members. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We got the minutes for our Planning Commission meeting on December 5th, and is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I approve. Approve. Aye. Motion, we approve the minutes for the December 5th meeting.
All right. Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Now's the time for public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing. Please welcome your, please limit your comments to three minutes and keep in mind that you are on live TV. Do we have anyone who would like to talk tonight? Please come up and speak into the mic and tell us who you are, and either one.
Hello, I'm Phil Magnin.
Have a seat.
Hello, I'm Phil Magnin. I'm a pastor. I've been in this town for a number of years. And is this where my time starts? Okay. I would like to talk about how the retail sale of marijuana in the city, what kind of an effect it's had since it's been here, as well as across the country. In fact, it's kind of almost like a Petri dish of what's going on. We can actually look at it and what's actually grown since then. For starters, after speaking to local police, reading many articles, there's been a significant increase in traffic accidents and fatalities across the country related to pot use. What will that mean? It means more people are either dying or injured. And the fact is, and of course, from a financial standpoint, do we even think that the health insurance companies or the auto insurance companies are going to stand idly by and absorb the incredible spike in financial costs due to the use of marijuana? You think we won't be paying higher rates. Many cities across Oregon did decide to do the responsible thing, and they refused to allow pot stores to operate in their cities. And we know that there is scientific proof that young people, their brains are being affected using marijuana. They're not developing properly. Even Psychology Today says that they found that it's common among marijuana users to have symptoms of psychosis, which is severe mental disorder, which thought and emotions are so impaired that contact is lost with external reality. I don't think we need more people like that on the road or through the van doos or corridor, to be honest with you. And when you look at the amount of emergency room incidents related to marijuana use going up 62% over the past seven years, and midwives telling me personally that babies are being born with the inability to breathe on their own because of mothers using pot, have we lost our collective minds? I am also bewildered how our city did not consider the real possibility that now, since marijuana is available to all the adults, that basically they can supply, an endless supply, to our youth. And this is being borne out even at Taft High. And I have been told by both students and police that the use of marijuana among the youth has spiked. It's embarrassing to explain to visitors that we indeed allow the sale of a damaging drug from stores, even when our city had a huge drug problem begin with. Doesn't that sound a bit counterintuitive to increase drug use in a town that already had a drug problem? Doesn't that seem self-defeating? Is it really good for our future as a city? I'm simply asking the Planning Commission, with all due respect, to revisit the drug issue in our city for the sake of future generations who will look upon us either with pride or sadness for our short-sighted zoning policies. If you cannot, I only have one sentence left. If you cannot remove the pot stores entirely, I would encourage you to at least greatly thin them out by putting greater distance between them. Don't we owe it to our children and our children's children? Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there anybody else who would like to speak in the public comments session? Please tell us who you are. You'll have three minutes, and keep in mind you're on live TV.
Thank you. I'm Pastor Bob Harrison from Agape Fellowship down in Taft. I've been here for approximately 50 years. And one of the things that I'd like to say tonight is that the Planning Commission doesn't have an easy job. I realize that. And I remember 30 years back when we were trying to put up yurts in Taft, and the Planning Commission had to decide whether or not we were going to put up yurts. Well, at that time, they weren't a, they were trying to make it a permanent dwelling. And yurts aren't classified a permanent dwelling. They're actually classified a tent. And so I knew I could do it, but I chose to step down and not push against it because we were trying to work with the people in Taft. And Taft is the ones that were coming against it. The thing that I would like the Planning Commission to remember is that your position is a very hard one, and we should try to live our lives according to the golden rule. And everybody knows what the golden rule is. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. In every condition, there's rules and a place for rules, but there is also exceptions to the rules. We should be able to make exceptions as human beings. And that would come back onto the Planning Commission, too. And I'm not here to tell you what exceptions to make. That is up to you. But be open to exceptions to the rules. I know that Planning Commissions operate on definition and zoning. And if your zoning doesn't fit your definition, you're in a world of trouble. But I also know that the Planning Commission can change the definition. So it's up to you what you define something. See, I know just enough to be dangerous. And I know there's a lot that I don't understand. But I do know that working with, and this is a non-agenda item, but working with people, let's leave it at that. Working with people is not an easy job either. You are working with disassociation, people that have disassociation problems. You work with schizophrenic people. You work with bipolar people. And organizations that work with these people have policies in place, which is a good thing, just like the planning department is a good thing. But it keeps people out of dumpsters. It keeps people from urinating throughout our town or defecating throughout our town. It gives guidelines to where people can get help. And so I would ask that you would keep these things in mind as you do your job. I know that doesn't necessarily fit into the key of what you feel your job is, but keep it in the back of your mind.
Thank you for your testimony tonight. Anyone else? All right. Our public comment period is concluded. Are there any final, no final orders, resolutions, or written communications tonight? No public hearing deliberations? Any old business?
No old business, no new business.
No new business. All right. Planning Commission training. Deborah?
We have a short video that we want to show you. And it's, basically, it's a thought piece. There is tough language in it, not the kind you've heard lately, but...
No.
I want you to disregard, it characterizes developers in particular often as greedy and so on. Put that aside. What I'm thinking is, think about what they're talking about in terms of what makes an attractive city. That's the point of it. It's, I mean, the person who put this together was doing some proselytizing, but...
Well, keep that in mind.
His fundamental ideas are good ones, so...
And I think, you know, one reason that this is appropriate as we start 2018 is one of our goals for 2018 is to make amendments to our commercial design standards. And so, you know, this ties in with that sort of thinking. So something, something to add to your, to your list of information.
Cities are a big deal. We pretty much all have to live in them. We should try hard to get them right. So few cities are nice. Very, very few out of many thousands are really beautiful. Embarrassingly, the more appealing ones tend to be old, which is weird because we're mostly much better at making things now, cars, planes, or phones. Why not end cities? It's crazy to settle for this and to leave something so important to chance. We need to get more scientific and identify the principles that determine how a city gets to be pretty or ugly. It's not a mystery why we like some cities so much better than others. This is a manifesto about how to make attractive cities. There are six fundamental things a city needs to get right. One of the things we really love in cities is order. Order means balance, symmetry, and repetition. It means the same thing happening again and again, and the left side matching the right side. Order is one of the reasons so many people love Paris, but most cities are a complete mess. When it's a mess, it seems like no one's in charge, and that's worrying. It's horrible when everything is jumbled up, a pitched roof next to a flat roof, a stark geometrical box next to a muddled car park, high-rise towers that look as if they've been placed at random like teeth in a gaping mouth. We generally have an itch to straighten things out, and when we can't, it's frustrating. The same urge is there when we look at cities. Often, it's not skyscrapers we mind in the city. It's skyscrapers that have been dumped without planning, like they are increasingly in London, whereas New York or Chicago shows the ordered way that we love. However, you have to keep something else in mind. Excessive order can be just as much of a problem. Too much regularity can be soul-destroying. Too much order feels rigid and alien. It can be bleak, relentless, and harsh. So the ideal we're seeking is variety and order. This is the idea in a square in Telch in the Czech Republic, where every house has the same width and height, but within that ordered pattern, every house has been allowed freedom at the level of form and color. Or in Java Island in Amsterdam, where the pattern is quite strict, each house has the same height and width, the color range is restricted, but within this grid, each unit is completely individual. We're perfectly in the middle between chaos and boringness here, and that's what humans adore. That's what more and more cities should have: order and variety. So as a general rule, too much mess, and it's off-putting, but too much simple order, and it's boring. What we crave is organized complexity, which you can see as much here as here. Now for the second thing that makes cities beautiful. They have to have visible life. There are streets that are dead and streets that are alive, and in general, we crave for live ones. This is a live street in Hong Kong. This is a live scene in Venice. In the 18th century, the painter Canaletto specialized in pictures of cities everyone loved because they're full of life. There's always plenty going on. In this painting, we can see a stonemason's yard. The work sheds are rough, but they're charming. It's fascinating to see what people are up to. How do they load those huge blocks onto the gondolas? The life of the city is on display, and we're primed to love this. Contrast this with the dead streets of many modern cities. Today, the places where a lot of the work gets done look dull and dead. They're spaced out along huge highways, and you never go there unless you happen to work there yourself because there's nothing to see. And most office buildings are brutally anonymous. The people inside might be working on all sorts of fascinating stuff, but we just don't know, and it's disorienting and cold. The street levels are dead. Contrast this with the streets we all love, where you can see things going on: a bakery, a cobbler's shop, a market selling carpets, a burger bar, a bookshop. These are streets we love because they're full of life. More and more, in modern cities, we've hidden life away. We have lots of dead sheds and dead towers connected up by dead motorways where you can barely glimpse your fellow humans. Rather than the old alleyways where you can see people at work, look at them in the eye as they walk down the road and feel connected to others. Modern planners have become obsessed by hiding technology rather than trying to make it nice to look at. Today, we'd be outraged if we heard a huge pipeline was going to be slapped across a lovely river. We'd be up in arms! But we book trips to go and see the Roman Ponte du Gard in southern France. That's because it's built for beauty and practicality. We think it's the pipe we hate. It's not. It's just the ugliness. So let's make sure our streets are full of life, full of people doing stuff you can see through the windows. That's what makes certain cities so attractive to walk along, that work is on show, that people are proud of what they're doing and are happy to let the world notice and appreciate the practical side of things. There's a third principle of good cities: they are compact. In the past, being able to be alone or just with your partner or family was at first a huge achievement. Only the largest class, the poor, lived huddled together, and it was horrid. As soon as people had money, they wanted to move out and have their own plots. Through the later decades of the 20th century, more and more people tucked themselves away in a private realm, and it's been a disaster. It's become deadly, cold, boring, and very, very wasteful on the environment. A compact city like Barcelona swallows a fraction of the energy of a sprawling one like Phoenix in Arizona. We've built a world of endless dead dormitory suburbs connected by sterile wide motorways, all because we labor under the false impression that we want to be far away from other people. But in fact, it's wonderful to have the balancing, moderating influence of living close to other people in uplifting surroundings. That's why we need tightly packed, well-ordered cities with lots of squares and public places in which we can hang out. All the most beautiful, compact cities have squares, yet the art of the square has gone into terrible decline. We keep promoting the invention of mobile phones, but no one's built a good square anywhere on this planet for decades. It's not rocket science, though. Look at the Piazza Santa Maria in Castlevari, Rome. It's a public place, but intimate and enclosed enough to feel like an extension of your home. Landaging about here, having a coffee or a beer, reading a paper, you get to be around other people. Their moderating, cheering effect is restoring. It takes you away from the over-intense, couple-obsessed atmosphere of the home. There's an art to a good square. It should be neither too big nor too small. Anything over 30 meters in diameter starts to become too large, by which we mean the individual becomes overly small relative to the space around them, creating a sense of alienation and dislocation. In a good square, you should be able to see the face of a person across the square. You could, if need be, hail someone walking on the other side. The ideal square must offer a feeling of containment, but not claustrophobia. There's another principle of good cities to do with orientation and mystery. By definition, cities are huge, but the cities that a lot of people love also have lots of little backstreets and small lanes where you can feel cozy and get a bit lost. We're drawn to the sense of mystery and enclosure that these streets offer. It's actually lovely to get a bit lost. A warren of alleyways can feel homely and intimate. At Cartagena in Colombia, the balconies nearly touch across the street. You can see your neighbors having breakfast. You know when they've gone to bed, what time the children do their homework on a Sunday evening. The fact that everyone's a little bit on display a lot of the time tends to make people nicer. They don't shout at each other quite so much. They put flowers on the table more often. We like it, but we forget that we do, and we don't quite know how to ask for it. Modern planners and developers give us maximum privacy because they suppose that's what we all want, and because they insist that cars and lorries, which like a lot more space than people, are the most important things in the world. Of course, we need balance between small streets and big ones. Necessarily, cities are large. We love small streets, but they're a nightmare when you have to go any distance. So the ideal is to have big boulevards, grand, wide, straight places, and also little warrens of streets. We need cities that offer us two important pleasures: the pleasures of mystery and the pleasures of orientation. Let's think about scale now. Modern cities are all about big things. Joseph Campbell once wrote, "If you want to see what a society really believes in, look at what the biggest buildings on the horizon are dedicated to." The biggest, most prominent things tell us about the actual, rather than the admitted, priorities of a society. We don't collectively say we worship sports shoe corporations, tax specialists, the oil industry, and pharmaceuticals. Our cities, however, tell another story. They're full of enormous towers devoted to just these things. That is a bit depressing. As humans, we don't mind things being big per se. We don't mind being humbled, so long as the things we're bowing to deserve homage, like a beautiful mosque or cathedral or a museum. But we've allowed our cities to be hijacked by aggressive commercial interests, by towers that honor not God or love or humanity, but pizza corporations and hedge funds. They exist because we've made a big, dumb, collective mistake. We focused on who owns land, but we don't think about who owns space, who has air rights. And in the end, who has air rights determines what you can see from your window. We suggest that the ideal height for any city block is five stories high. No more. Above that, people start to feel small, insignificant, trivial. So we say, cut down those towers and pack everything into five stories. Make it dense, compact, and tight, like they do in some parts of Berlin, Amsterdam, London, and Paris, the bits we love. Of course, occasionally, it can be a huge building, but let's keep it for something really special, something all of humanity can love. Towers have to be worthy of their prominence. They must be aligned with our best ambitions and long-term needs. Finally, make it local. Some things should be the same everywhere. We don't expect there to be a uniquely Venezuelan telephone or a distinctively Icelandic bicycle, but we don't want buildings to look the same everywhere. It's hugely disappointing when you fly somewhere for hours, land, and feel you could be anywhere. The problem isn't just that we'd like a bit of variation for its own sake. Because of climate, history, and social traditions, each society really does have different needs, different strengths and weaknesses. There are many distinct styles of happiness, many good and varied ways of conducting collective life. The sameness of cities is a problem because it reveals how far each must be from engaging with a specific character of its own place. It's like wearing the same clothes you all climates, or speaking in exactly the same way irrespective of who you're talking to. Cities need to have strong characters connected to the use of distinctive local materials and forms. The pale sandstone of Millbrae Crescent in Glasgow's south side is a local material, a medium-grained, carboniferous blond sandstone formed when the Scottish landmass lay near the equator. Or around Cambridge, brick from the local yellowish-gold clay is a major traditional material. Or think of the way the great Australian architect Glenn Murkert found ways to put up buildings that reflected the distinctive character of Australian life. So the law should be, don't make your city from buildings that could be just anywhere. Find a style of architecture that reflects what makes your location specific. The obstacles to building beautiful cities are not economic. Collectively, we've got enough money. We face two main problems. Firstly, an intellectual confusion around beauty, and secondly, lack of political will. The intellectual confusion is, we think no one has a right to say what's beautiful and what's ugly. We get worried about whose sides. We think beauty is subjective, so surely no one should say anything about it. It's a very understandable qualm, but it's horribly useful to greedy property developers. It's such a relief to these people to learn that there is no such thing as beauty. It means they can get away with murder. We may not agree to the very last point about what a beautiful city is, but we know an ugly one when we see it. No one's ever willingly taken a holiday in Frankfurt-on-Main or Birmingham, and there are good reasons for this, to do with an objective sense of beauty. So let's stop being dangerously relativistic about this. Yes, there is such a thing as beauty. Sydney and San Francisco and Bath and Bordeaux have it, and most other places don't. But proof lies in the tourist statistics. Let's not keep saying beauty is just in the eye of the beholder. That's just a gift to the next wealthy idiot who wants to put up a horrible tower. The other obstacle is a lack of political will. We've abandoned the design of cities to the greedy rich. We've given up believing in democracy. We face and have lost the battle between the public good and commercial opportunism. There will always be a greedy, slick lobby fighting for ugly development, but we can say no. Beautiful cities have only ever been created when governments impose strict and ambitious regulations to keep the greedy private guys in check. Think of Edinburgh's amazing new town, which only got off the ground because the government established clear rules to keep developers in check. They wrote precise legislation detailing heights of buildings, quality of finish, the width of pavements, and a character of the skyline. That's the only way you get beauty. They didn't leave it to the free market. Do that, and you will have chaos. When governments give up on beauty, people start to hate all building. We become collectively despondent. We think we hate all building and that we can't create beautiful places. We get obsessed by restoration and opposed to anything new, which is wrong because we need places to live. Humanity hasn't put up a single beautiful city since about 1905. When Venice was built, no one regretted the lagoons that had been swallowed up. The goal of building should be to put up things that don't leave us regretting the nature that's been lost, because the architecture is every bit the equal of the designs of nature. We can create more beautiful cities, but we have to confront opportunistic developers and our own intellectual confusions. Governments can only create beauty if they have enough public backing. Political will is ultimately about what all of us, the electorate, are asking for. That's why we made this film and hope to awaken you to your power as citizens to help legislate for beautiful cities in the future. These are the six rules. Now it's time to fight, to put them in action.
Okay, there you are.
All right. Any comments on the film or reactions to it?
Nobody has anything to say about that.
All right. Next item would be, any more training tonight, or that's it?
No, that's it. That's our training for tonight.
Reports and comments. Richard?
Really nothing to report right now.
Deborah, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Well, Steve, you were asking about what happened at the council meeting last time with Proud Ground, and I did make some notes about that. I had the agenda open so that we, or the packet open so we could see the actual action, but it seems to have gone away. Proud Ground is... Okay, hold on a second. Its mission is homeownership. It's 20 years old, this organization. And Bill Hall, who's one of our county commissioners, had come to the meeting with the executive director of Proud Ground. They are working on a memo of understanding to combine the Lincoln Community Land Trust, which works in Lincoln County, with Proud Ground. Proud Ground, their mode of operation is they purchase land, they lower, and so they lower the buyer's price because they retain ownership of the land. And sort of like, I think, Lincoln County Land Trust has been doing, or Community Land Trust has been doing the same sort of thing. Both work closely with Habitat, so, you know, they take advantage of trying to get some volunteer labor and that kind of thing. Anyway, their goal is to ensure permanent affordability as well as lowering the price so that a wider range of buyers can get into a home. So the action of the council was to confirm the ent- So the action of the council was to confirm the intent of Lincoln Community Land Trust to merge with Proud Ground. Then they feel this is advantageous because then it combines the staffing for both organizations, the bookkeeping, and all those kinds of things, fundraising. And so anyway, that's essentially what they did. I don't recall a lot of the details that they provided, but it seems to me that the Proud Ground woman said they own something like 240 houses now in the state. They own the ground underneath it anyway, I think is what she meant. And so they are doing, they're doing a lot of good, one house at a time, essentially.
Do they own the land in perpetuity, or is it a lease arrangement?
I believe they own the land, from what she said. I'm not, I'm not an expert about this, and if you want, we can probably get somebody to come and talk in more detail about it.
I'm curious what their, what their funding is, and who pays the taxes on the property?
You know, one of the things that the executive mentioned was that some cities will reduce the property taxes because they are only, the owners don't own the land. But then, of course, you know, I don't know why Proud Ground would end up having to pay the taxes on the land, so I'm not sure how it works. In the council, or in our webpage, city webpage, you can go to the agenda packets and videos, and you can go to the city council meeting. And it was this meeting on January 8th. If you want to look in the packet, it is under Special Order of Business. And here's the assignment of MOU, Memo of Understanding, with Lincoln Community Land Trust. So if you go to that item, you can, huh, it should just go there, but apparently it's not going to. So you can go and find that section of the packet, and there is some more information about Proud Ground and the actual memo of understanding.
Do we know if the land trust owns any property here in Lincoln City?
Couple houses, I believe, yes. Richard Appicello, do you happen to know any more about this? Or Richard Townsend?
Yeah, my understanding was it was an assignment from, the land trust had decided to assign their obligations under the MOU to Proud Ground. Proud Ground being in a better leverage situation and can take advantage of grants and other funding opportunities that the land trust did not have available. And I believe Proud Ground actually has been operating under a contract with the land trust here in Lincoln County.
Thank you.
Okay, so yes, if you're interested, there, right here is where you can find out a lot more about it. Okay.
Richard, do you have any comments? All right. What about future agenda items and maybe, I was thinking maybe we could have an overview of some of the issues that we're going to be dealing with in 2018. We spoke a bit about that at our last meeting. And what's coming up on the horizon?
The February 6th hearing, or meeting, we don't have any hearings scheduled, but it might be a good opportunity to do exactly what you just said, go over goals for the coming year. And we're looking at completing the vision statement, new comprehensive plan, new plan for the villages at Cascade Head, partial design standards and revisions to our sign ordinance. So we have some big things coming up.
Can we back that up with the goals that we set for 2017 to see which goals?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. Actually, we did very well.
At our last meeting, Doug, I don't believe you were here, and we did talk about what we accomplished in 2017. And yeah, as Richard said, we did quite well in reaching many of our goals.
Steve, got a question?
Yes. At whose request, or can you tell me anything about the public hearing that got canceled and the status of the shelter at this moment?
It was at the request of the warming shelter that the hearing got postponed. I issued a notice of violation to the shelter and to the property owner. And they had ten days in which, that was on, I believe, January 2nd or 3rd. They had ten days in which to respond with an assurance of voluntary compliance, which is what the ordinance requires. They did respond on Friday afternoon, on the 12th, in a timely manner, with an assurance of voluntary compliance that is, one of, there are three items, and one of which was a request for a postponement of this, of the hearing, while there's a chance for a possible legislative solution to occur.
So we do or don't have a warming shelter at this point?
One, as I said, there were three items, one of which was a limitation of how often the warming shelter would be allowed to operate. That basically had to do with the temperature at night. It's still operating, and I haven't made a final decision on the assurance of voluntary compliance, whether it's acceptable or not. Assuming that it is or can be made acceptable, then it would continue to operate, and that would become an order of the municipal court.
Thank you, Richard, for the, giving that background. One thing we might want to do at the February 6th meeting also is look again what we accomplished in 2017, and if there are any amendments that we might want to request of the city council to address, for example, the tree issue that you brought up, and if there are any others that we might want to talk about that. And maybe do that on a regular basis as we go forward throughout the year, maybe every two months, have a discussion about, you know, what changes we might ask the city council to make based on our experience here as planning commission members.
I think we can also perhaps fold in some of the information that we're getting from the visioning process and see if there are things that, you know, some good ideas that people have brought up that maybe are, you know, things we could tackle.
One idea I had, too, I'd like feedback on, is that with the Nelscott Neighborhood Association, we have visited the, with the staff members from the Public Works Department, the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant, and both, the visits are very informative, and people who participated really appreciated being a part of the group that toured these two facilities. And I thought it might be a good idea, maybe when we have our new member onboard, to have sort of a tour of the city's public facilities and properties, say from Cascade Head to South Scottler City, and maybe visit some of the properties that the city owns and is, will be putting up for sale, and maybe look at some of the areas in Cascade Head where the new school might be proposed. And then also visit some of the infrastructure, like the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. I know if we're all together, that would be a public meeting, so you would probably have to announce that. But is this feasible? Is it something we could do as a group?
I think we can do it. Yeah, we have to give notice because it is a public meeting, so, but we can do it.
Is it something you would like to do?
If you're interested in that, are you thinking of taking a whole day to do these things or, or breaking it up into visits to different parts of town?
I wouldn't think it would take more than a morning, or maybe, you know, from nine to noon, you know, we could do it pretty quickly.
Okay.
You're, but you went on the tour.
That's pretty quick.
That's pretty quick.
I think so. Having organized field trips before.
Maybe we could organize into two phases. We'll talk about it, but let's talk about it at the February meeting.
If there are particular sites you want to see, let us know.
Cascade Head, I mean.
Obviously.
Spend all morning there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it depends on how much hiking you want to do.
Two miles. Yeah.
I think Deborah mentioned it to me.
Mr. Chairman, microphones.
I think Deborah mentioned to me that she, or you had had a meeting with the property owners along the Nelscott Gap, all the way between 23rd Street and 32nd Street, to explain the possibility of a second arterial foothill boulevard going in there. And I'd like to see some work done on that because I think that is the only way that Lincoln City will actually have some growth. And everything else is secondary to that, if we're going to have a good flow of traffic so that we can develop the Nelscott area as well as the villages. So I'd like to know what is being done, or can something be done at our level to encourage
One of the things that we're going to be doing over the next several months is some ordinance changes with specific reference to the Nelscott Gap area. And so that can help to encourage that.
Any other comments?
I have a question for Richard.
Yes.
Richard, I noticed that they're doing some construction work down at the D Park. It looks like they're doing some boring.
At what park?
At the D River Way Side.
Oh, that's the, that's, they're undergrounding the utilities along there, so they're boring under the river there.
So are they, how far are they boring? Because in old plan, had them going up to roughly, I think, where the Mexican restaurant is on the...
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how far north they're going.
Well, I remember the original plan was to go that far, but now I hear it's been shortened, and I'm wondering why it was shortened compared to the other one, because the other one was at least two blocks off of the, off of what I hear they're doing.
I know there's a limited pot of money, and I suspect to the extent it was shortened, that would be the reason for it.
Well, it just seems odd. If you've got everything there, why aren't you just going National Island, saving it, you know, saving the other setup cost?
I don't have an answer, so.
Is that through the...
Urban renewal.
They're the ones that let out the bid on that project?
Sorry?
They're the one that let out the bid?
Yes.
That it had to be approved by the city manager?
City council.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would like to thank you, Richard, for dealing with a difficult situation while just all keeping our, you know, thoughts, sending your positive thoughts on that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. One other thing is regarding agendas, on February 20th, we're going to have a presentation on tsunamis, which I think will be really interesting, so it should be a good one.
Who's doing the presentation?
Is Meg?
Meg Reed is coastal planner for Department of Land and Conservation and Development, Conservation and Development, yes. And she has, we are working with Meg on a grant that will allow us to get some help with some, using some new technology to figure out what areas in the tsunami evacuation zones are obstacles to people getting out of the, out of the tsunami, or out of danger and to higher ground. Seaside has done this, and for instance, they identified bridges that would not withstand the earthquake prior to the tsunami. So that's, then in the planning, we decide what we want to do about a bridge or some other kind of obstacle to make sure that, and to see what's most important in terms of evacuating people. So there's a beat-the-wave technology, and we will get, have an opportunity to see how that works. And also, it's going to be a whole process that involves community meetings to discuss what kinds of amendments we might want in our code, whether we want an overlay zone that has different standards if you're in a tsunami area. What else? I don't know, but that's, you know, it's, it's going to be probably a year-long process and to work through all these things and get a lot of public...
This is a public process?
Yes. Part of it is, and part of it is a technical process where Dogami, the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, and DLCD, Community Development, will work with us to use some of their tools to help us figure out what's going on, what our chances are of escaping a tsunami and minimizing the damage and loss of life. So I think it'll be pretty important stuff.
Yeah, any other comments? All right, tonight's meeting is adjourned.